The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for November 7th, 2018. Glad you're here and welcome. First item that we're going to start with is the anthem. First, we're going to start with the pledge, and then we're going to, if you remain standing, we're going to do the anthem. And we'll be joined this evening by a combined band from Green Hills and West Bristol.
West Bristol.
Okay. I thought so. I'm going from memory. So please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic Thank you very much, Mrs. Devonaire. Our first item on the agenda is staff recognition, and Dr. Moreau will take that item.
Thank you. Is Joanne Plouso here? Ah, Joanne. Joanne is a teacher at Bristol Eastern. Teaches senior English. Sophomore. And she was recognized by the New England Association of Teachers of English as the 2018 Poet of the Year. Congratulations. Next, we have Dr. Dave Huber and Kim DeFusco, who recently presented at the Literacy for All conference. And I'm going to ask them to say a couple of words because Mrs. DeFusco was so excited when she came in here that she was bursting because she got a shout-out from where?
I said that. Dr. Huber and I, we have brought Bristol Public Schools to the international level because at our presentation, we asked to get literacy for all. First of all, we had over 50 teachers and administrators attend, and I did get, I was messaged by a teacher in Canada who asked for some information from our school. So I told Dave that we're now international.
There we go. Well, thank you both for going out and sharing the good work that you're doing at Southside School. Next, Dr. Mike Dieter and Erica Triani. She's our attendance. I think she's got more titles than attendance. They presented at the Global Youth Court Conference, and Mike, would you just give a little bit of a snippet?
Sure. The Global Youth Conference is a conference that meets twice a year, and we are looking at bringing in some alternative programs into Bristol that would be a peer court, peer youth court model, where for offenses that typically would clog up, you know, low-level, more discipline-related things that are not significant, where there'd be peer-to-peer counseling and some sanctions that would happen, you know, to repair whatever violations that may exist. We're looking forward to this.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is our approval of the minutes. We had a meeting on October 3rd, so I would entertain, first of all, is there any corrections, deletions, additions? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So, vote.
It's been properly made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been properly made and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
Abstained. I wasn't there.
Abstained as well. I wasn't here as well.
Can we now move on to committee reports? And our first committee would be Operations.
The Operations Committee met at 6:30 tonight to discuss a modification to the parking lot at the request of the local business owner, I assume. And we approved it. And we need to put that on the agenda under New Business.
Okay, we're going to do that now? We're going to do that under New Business?
Whatever you say.
We'll do it under New Business. I think that's what Mrs. Everett likes to do. The next item, next committee is our Student Achievement.
Thank you very much. So we met for a brief meeting on October 17th, and we discussed the Smarter Balance Assessment that was taken in 2018, and Harley Thornton will give a thorough report on that to the full board.
Next month.
Next month.
She had a family death, so she isn't here this evening.
Sorry to hear that.
Any questions? If not, we will move on to the Finance Committee.
Good evening, everyone. The Finance Committee met on October 15th. At that meeting, we talked about how we were going to switch the meeting date to the third Monday in the month as opposed to immediately the night before this meeting. There's really not that much to report yet. We are still in the beginning of the fiscal year. I will say that we're looking like we're on track. Nothing is jumping out at us right now that we need to be concerned about. I do want to highlight just a little bit, and I'm asking Mrs. Brown to highlight in a little bit more detail, CEP is working extremely successfully. The schools that are fortunate enough to be in the program, I see Dr. Huber shaking his head, yes. The students are eating. Parents, teachers, anyone knows that a student who is hungry is not going to perform well. It's going to be a difficult time. So all of the students are benefiting from this program. I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Brown, and she can talk a little bit more about that.
Sure. Thank you. The community eligibility provision, as you know, provides breakfast and lunch to represent all the students in seven of our schools that qualify with the federal guidelines for that qualification. As a result of that, we shared with you last month that in the month of September 2018 versus last year, September 2017, we served 23,410 more meals. We just got the numbers in today after studying the month of October 17 versus 18. We served 36,604 more meals to our students. So we're very, very happy and proud of that. Because of those higher participation rates and more meals served, we do qualify for a greater federal reimbursement. For both the months of September and October, we have received well over $100,000 more than we did in the corresponding months last year. So it's very good news. Very exciting.
Thank you. And just a reminder, with the new meeting night, our next meeting this month is going to be the 19th, Monday, the 19th, at 6:30. Any questions?
Okay. If not, we'll move on to Communications and Community Relations.
So we met on October 24th. The first agenda item was the review of the Fall Newsletter, and although today is the 7th, Sarah wanted to let everybody know that the 7th was the deadline for that newsletter. If any of the schools still have something on, I'm sure she'll probably take it. We did let Sarah know who the commissioners were that were liaisons to the schools, so hopefully as members of the Board of Ed here, we could help out if needed in the future. We then also had an update from Dr. Carbone on our communication plan and the use of social media and Twitter, which was a very nice update with some great progress from our previous meeting about six months earlier. We had an awful lot of public participation at this meeting, which is pretty unusual for the CCR meeting. And I do want to recognize that several people from the committee, including Joe Hoxa, Ogo Kalender, Tim Camerel, and I'm going to, or Tim, I think it's Tim Camerel, and I'm probably going to miss a few, but we had quite a few people come to discuss a topic that was on the agenda, equity, race, and diversity. That was an agenda item that we didn't officially get on the agenda, but we had a very good discussion, and I think it's an important thing for us to do, to have those discussions. I think that we had a little debate about how that happened, and I do just want to give a quick overview here of a little bit of the history of that. I think there has been some discussion on what's happened, but in August, the full board approved the Equity, Diversity, and Excellence Committee. It has been reported that both Commissioner Giantonio and myself dissented to that committee. I do want to say that in fact, we abstained from the vote because we had asked for a postponement, and that postponement did not pass. We were unaware of any of the information on this, and the CAPE Initiative that was done in June, we both were not able to attend as well. So that agenda on that in August was added 26 hours before the meeting, and we didn't feel that we had any information to vote on it. The only public information that has actually been on this topic was presented on the CAPE website at this meeting, which I'm reporting on, the CCR meeting. Chairman Wilson stated that the program in June was not maybe the best foot forward with that, and some of the material was outdated. However, those, the exercise that was done that evening, which was called the White Privilege Exercise, is still on the CAPE website, and this board on that August night approved the formation of a committee in August. They were reluctant to postpone the meeting for us so that we can have one month to go ahead and decide that. And this morning, at 10:51 a.m., I received an email to finally put me on this committee, which is what we asked for there. So I will gladly accept the appointment to that committee. I look forward to it. However, it's pretty disturbing to me that it's taken 82 days to form this committee. I'm also concerned about the lack of proper notification for the meeting that I am the chairman for, and that is something that has kind of got to be stopped. I think the other discussion in that meeting was that it was felt that this was a very politically motivated process. I also think that it's very interesting that we have now gone from a name of a committee, Equity, Diversity, and Excellence, Equity, Race, and Excellence, and now it's Equity, Inclusiveness, and Excellence. And I do have to say, I like the last name the best. I think this whole process has been a bit divisive. It's time for inclusiveness not only in our town, but on our boards, and especially in our schools. So I look forward to talking about equity with all of the citizens of Bristol. So there will be some meetings coming up. We'll have a couple of planning meetings first, and then we'll have a public meeting, I think, in December.
January.
What, is that January?
January 3rd.
So there's, yeah, two planning meetings. One is in November, December, and January. Thank you.
Okay. We will now move to the next.
I just want to make a comment. When that was brought to the meeting 24 hours in advance, it's important to realize that that particular committee is not something that really needed board vote. The superintendent decided, you know what, I'm going to bring the board in on this. That was totally within her purview, that particular committee, is totally within her purview to do. And I think it's inappropriate for you to be passively aggressively bashing some of us.
I think it's very inappropriate to be having a debate in a meeting like this as well, too.
Well, I'm just answering your comments in your committee report.
We're going to move on to our next agenda item, which would be our Student Representative Report, and who's reporting for us tonight? Okay.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the board. My name is Eddy Garcetti, and I'm the student representative for Bristol Central High School. I'm very excited to be speaking during tonight's meeting, and I hope everyone's week is going well and continues to improve. The month of October has gone by very quickly, and was filled with a multitude of activities, fundraisers, and high school games. In the beginning of October, our seniors took the SATs on the 6th and received their scores on October 15th. For those who want to improve their score, they decided to take it for the final time on November 3rd. This month has been very active for college applications, scholarships, and deadlines for seniors. In the middle of October, our school had parent conferences, held parent conferences through the 16th, 17th, and 18th. During conferences, students had the opportunity to volunteer to help parents find their child's classes and participate in the XL Club Baby Drive. The XL Club is another group that provides students with opportunities to volunteer for the community. This fundraiser collected donations of money and loads other donations such as baby wipes, diapers, bottles, and clothes for the Bristol Hospital for a family member. On October 22nd, the avid freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors had the amazing opportunity to go and take a tour of a wheel. This field trip opened the eyes of many of the students and showed them the potential they all have with the need to succeed in school. This past week has been a victory for many of the sports teams. Last week, the girls' soccer team won their first round of Class L tournaments against the Boelet Havens. On Monday, the girls' volleyball team won against Sacred Heart in their state championships. On November 2nd, the girls' women's dive team had their CCCs at Blatt High School. Girls could successfully swim all five times for state championships. Are now practicing for states, which will be held this Friday. Our football team celebrated their last Friday night home game of the season by winning their game against Blatt High School on November 2nd. It was also a last Friday night home game for the marching dance juniors and the senior cheerleaders. Now the football players will practice intensely for the annual Thanksgiving game and the special Battle of the Bell. The boys' soccer team celebrated their victory today against Ellis Tech, and the math team also had a math meet today in Newton. On November 3rd, the classes came together to have a film and space-themed homecoming dance in our cafeteria. Leading up to that Saturday, the school embraced their spirit by participating in Spirit Week. On Monday, we reminisced the warm weather through Hawaiian Day. Students wore Hawaiian leis and wore denim shirts. On Tuesday, we went retro through Throwback Tuesday by dressing up in our favorite decade. There was a multitude of hippies, peoples of the 90s, and even a girl from ancient Greece walking through the hallways. Tuesday was my personal favorite Spirit Week. Wednesday was Halloween, so of course, students dressed up in their spooky, cute, funny, and creative costumes. On Thursday, our students wore their class colors. Freshmen wore red, sophomores wore white, juniors wore pink, and seniors wore yellow. And on Friday, the entire school showed their rem pride by wearing maroon and white. Also on Thursday, on November 3rd, a few eager band members auditioned for the Northern Regional Band Festival at Alon High School. Students received their score and if they got in that following Monday. Those who successfully got in will begin participating, practicing for the regional festival in January, and some may even start practicing for all-day auditions. Now on to the amazing fundraiser Central has produced. Yesterday for Election Day, students who part of the Interaf Clubs and the National Honor Society volunteered at various schools in Bristol to provide additional help at the polls as well as to collect donations for the St. Vincent de Paul Homeless Shelter. The National Honor Society may hold a doctoral tournament this Friday. All money made that night will also be donated to the St. Vincent de Paul Homeless Shelter. This junior class held two fundraisers this month for the grad party and the class overall at Dunkley's Ice Cream and Firehouse Shops. Tonight, the junior class is holding their own fundraiser at Chili's. Many exciting events occur this month, and much more is to come in November. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Moreau, Dr. Carbone, and Dr. Dallin, commissioners. October has been a very busy month at Bristol Eastern. On October 10th, first of Easter, 9th to 11th grade students took the PSAT, a practice exam of SAT. 12th grade had the opportunity to go visit colleges or work on their applications. The PSAT was a success with over 90% participation rate. This year, Eastern has started a new organization called BE Pride, administered by Ms. Winter and Ms. Holmes. The goal is to improve our school and showcase our students, teachers, and courses. One of the major focuses for this year will be on school climate and how to make it even better. On October 18th, we had a dress-on day and all profit benefit BE Pride to help buy supplies to improve our display cases and other items in our building, such as updating the murals on the cafeteria and hallway walls and better showcasing our student accomplishments. The great part of all this organization is how our staff and students are coming together and collaborating on this project. We're expecting to expand our organization to include a student climate coalition as a way for all students in BE to identify areas of improvement and able to express their voices through the process. Also, this is an opportunity to work with staff to bring about change. As this work is issued, become an influential part of BE, I will keep you all posted with upcoming new projects. It is very exciting that this year, Eastern has started numerous new clubs to help students to make connections. We're currently in the trial process of having meetings to determine interest of students on the new clubs. The new club, the new club titled Dungeons and Dragons, helped by Ms. McDaniel, had their meeting October 18th for any students who are adventurous, creative, and imaginative. The songwriter club, founded by Donors Choose and helped by Mr. LaBoye, had their informational meeting on October 23rd to discuss students aspiring musicians or musical artists of any genre with a mission to record, produce, and release an album featuring songs by our own students. The movie and TV club had a first meeting also on October 23rd, held by Ms. Kukujkot for any students who love to watch movies or shows that have to add to have discussion on what makes this particular movie or show interesting. Occasionally, there will be popcorn with the movie. Furthermore, in the upcoming month, there will be more information on two more new clubs entitled Culture Club, helped by Ms. Shock, and Ski and Snow, for any help by Ms. Brady and Mr. Jumper. Donors Choose is a nonprofit organization that helps individuals to donate directly to public school classroom projects. Currently, there are 51 teachers at Eastern that have applied for grants for various classroom projects the Donors Choose, a bit over 15,000 have been requested. Many of the teachers who have applied have received funding. Eastern students have also participated in a mock election held by the city registration office on Tuesday, October 30th. Students were given the responsibility to work the polls, hand out stickers, and register to vote 50 or 18. The 500th Aid Night was held on November 5th in the BE cafeteria. Counselors and other staff members help families register with FASL and provide office boards in college application process. We're looking forward to our upcoming events, the family Thanksgiving dinner on November 15th through Lunchways, and our annual pub rally on November 21st.
Thank you, Laura. Students, I'll remind you that November 17th is the student panel discussion. I think you're all signed up to go, so I hope to see you at the CAPE convention. I think you'll have a lot of fun at the student session and then the panel discussion, so looking forward to seeing you. Our next item is my report, and I just lost my screen with my notes, but I will get back to it. The first thing I'll talk about is a CREC update, and I spoke to you last month about a resolution that the executive director and the council is trying to create regional cooperation in terms of funding for CREC. When the state legislature created all the magnet schools, they did not create a mechanism to fund those schools, so the executive director is trying to get all the school districts to collaborate around a resolution to hopefully bring that to the attention of the legislature so that they can funding. Their funding has been flat since the 11-12 school year. They get $10,443 from the state of Connecticut, and so what happens is they have to bill tuition to school districts like ours if our students go to those schools, and so it puts, you know, us at a disadvantage because we don't know what students are going to go on a year-to-year basis, and it makes it difficult for us to budget for that. They recognize that, and we're hoping that the legislature will address that in this upcoming session. And probably a more interesting topic is one of our schools, the University of Hartford Magnet School, received a blue ribbon citation. And many of you probably remember, I think Eastern has had that citation in the past, and Hubble has had it in some other schools. And in those days, if you had a principal who was a really great writer, and you submitted a great submission, and you'd get awarded a citation, but they changed how the citations are awarded now, and the State Department of Education does the submissions, and it's based on two criteria. One is an improvement in your SBAK scores, and the second one is closing the achievement gap. So the University of Hartford Magnet got the award because of their closing of the achievement gap for their students. The next item I'll talk about is CJF, the Connecticut Coalition Justice and Educational Funding. As many of you know, there was a court case last year that we lost the case by the slim margin of one vote, but the coalition has stayed together. It's a coalition of municipalities and school districts to work on justice and educational funding. So there are two, so the committee is continuing to work on testifying in front of the legislature and writing op-ed pieces and trying to inform stakeholders about the lack of justice in educational funding in Connecticut. There's two court cases that are flowing along that those of you who are interested in educational funding like I am will follow closely, and one is Robinson versus Wenzel. It's a new court case that the plaintiffs are trying it in federal court, which is kind of interesting because the statutory requirement to provide education is a Connecticut statute, not a federal statute, but they're choosing to take it to federal court, and so the court will have some choices as to how they handle that case. We're guessing is they will send it back with some instruction to the Connecticut Supreme Court. Connecticut Supreme Court can't either follow that advice or not, so it'll, it'd be interesting to see how that plays out. And that was really, the case is filed because they're saying they're creating racial quotas in the Hartford Magnet Schools. Now, I'm distinguishing between CREC, now these are Hartford Magnet Schools that this case has been brought against. And then the second case, which you've all heard about over the years from me, is a Chef versus O'Neill, and there was a stipulated agreement by the court and the plaintiffs in the state that they were agreed to do certain things. Unfortunately, they have not agreed to those stipulations, and so they went through a mediation process. The mediation process was unsuccessful, so now there's another trial set in February for the plaintiffs and the defendants to, I guess, discuss it. They're going through pre-trial and discovery now, and so they're ready for the case to come in February to argue the merits of the continuing desegregation of the Hartford Schools. Alex Knopp, who is the attorney and also a law professor at the Yale Law Clinic, is the one that is guiding us on this case and giving us advice. So he is the one that shares that information with us. And then finally, something more closer to home is Bristol Education Foundation update. Many of us in this room participated in a trivia night on October 19th. It was 120 people who are advocates of Bristol Education that participated. Some of us did a little better than the rest of us in terms of winning that event that night. Some of us were not helped form our teams, and we were lucky that we had some very bright other members of the team who had all the answers. But the foundation raised $2,800 profit, and that money gets used for the mini-grants, and the mini-grants have now, applications have been submitted to all the schools, and so we're asking the teachers and educators and even administrators to submit those applications, and they'll be reviewed by a committee of the Bristol Ed Foundation, and you will see those winners at our January meeting as we do each year. But we're very glad to see it was a successful event. In fact, I even saw some Southside teachers at another event, and they said, oh, we should do that more than once a year. But I'm not sure the foundation is up for doing it more than once a year, but we certainly will be bringing it back as an annual event for sure, and hope to even get a little bit more support and interest in that event. So that concludes my report. We'll move on to the superintendent, and she is at the podium to give her report.
I am. Good evening, commissioners. Safety, security update. Mrs. Brown is working with staff to put together a grant in the third round of school safety and security. We're hoping, since we have not been funded in the past, that we will receive some of the funding. District activities on Friday. District activities on Fridays outside school will be holding their annual Veterans Day recognition event at 9:30, and I'm guessing everybody's welcome to attend. The 26th Annual Feast of Family will be held next Thursday during all the schools' lunch waves. I encourage all of our commissioners to go to a school if they can to participate in that. It's really a wonderful event. The high schools really put on performances and make it... Each high school has their own, but I know that their teacher's scooping ice cream at Central. They also invite veterans, which is lovely. And so if you are available next Thursday, lunch waves at the high schools, I think, start about 10:35. The elementary, it's more like 11:30. And if you show up in that timeframe, you should be able to catch a lunch. Last week, the program committee or subcommittee of the Memorial Lord Arts Magnet met for the first time. We got to hear a lot of voices from many different aspects of our schools, administrators, teachers. Also invited Greg Han, who's a member of the City Council, who's a musician, to give some input. He wants to make sure there's an orchestra pit in front of the stage as a musician, and that wasn't originally in the drawing, so it was good to have that input because according to him, we can get more performers in if we have a pit than if we didn't have a pit. So that was interesting to hear. We're hoping to go and visit some Arts Magnet Schools. Lori Ashner, retired arts teacher, is on the Building Committee, but also is liaison to this committee. She's already gone and visited two Arts Magnets, was able to really provide a lot of information for us. So we're going to be meeting every two weeks on the Thursday of the same, every two weeks of the Building Committee, so that people won't have to come out twice. There are people who are redundant on those two committees. So updating district priorities. And I just want to point to, we have our mission at the top, teach and learn with passion and purpose. And at the bottom, excellence, innovation, trust, inclusiveness, and accountability are the core values of this Board of Education, which is where the name for the committee that we're going to be working with for a community conversation comes from. They're not in that order, but it seemed to make sense if we couldn't use the CAPE words that I would take them directly from the core values that you all created. So one of our priorities is to inspire and cultivate talent. So in the last month, we've got teachers and administrators entering their evaluations into an online system called ProTrak. Most goal-setting has occurred already. And so now we're into the observation stage and working in school teams during Wednesdays, also before and after school. These are our instructional improvement teams and school leadership teams. We also have new staff hires who are bringing a whole lot of excitement into the teams that they're working with. If you're not able to visit our new teacher event that we have in August, put it on your calendar for next year because the excitement that's in this room when those folks are coming in as new teachers, maybe just new to Bristol, or maybe new to teaching, it's very inspirational, and they just exude kind of that first day that we all felt a long time ago, which I still feel. We still... Many folks, I think, would say that the night before school, they don't sleep very well because they think they're going to be late for school. We're recognizing staff and student accolades at these meetings, as you heard earlier, and that's all part of inspiring and cultivating our talent. Organizational/Operational Effectiveness for this month. JR Rosario is our new Director of Safety and Security. He's been attending emergency prepared drills at every school, and then he debriefs with the school crisis team to talk about ways of improving and also to help share some of the best practices that he's seen when he goes to other schools. Our central office leadership team, Crisis Team, went to Hubble and participated in one of their drills, and each of us followed a staff member on the role that that staff member has when there's a drill to really get a sense of what they're doing. And Mrs. Delio, one of the things that we do is we knock on doors to see if people will open them, and she really was persistent. And on the fourth screen knocking, the door did open. But again, that's one of the ways that we can teach staff, no matter what somebody says, unless it's a police officer who can prove it's a police officer, you leave your doors closed until you hear an all-clear. And it's that time again. We're starting to work on our budget, which is unbelievable. The packets have gone out to department heads and principals. They'll be meeting with Mrs. Brown if they have any questions. There'll be some training on... This is all online now, so they have to go in and put in their budget information. They'll also then, in December, be meeting with our central leadership team to tell us why they need the funds that they need and how they might use those funds or grant funds in a new and innovative way. Community Engagement and Partnerships. As Dr. Dieter said, we just received a $50,000 diversion grant, and this is to help us keep kids out of the juvenile justice system. So there'll be some programs put in place. And Erica Trionne will be working on this. She's been on the JRB Juvenile Review Board for many years and has a very high level of expertise in how to try to turn kids around before they ended up in juvenile detention. And as was said earlier, we're planning a community conversation about equity, inclusiveness, and excellence. The first planning meeting is the 19th of November, the 2nd on December 3rd. There are parents, administrators, teachers, board members, and will be facilitated by Carrie Lord, who is a very seasoned equity consultant with the Connecticut Center for School Change. Really looking forward to that work. And learner-focused. We're implementing the Next Generation Science Standards. We have our Teacher on Special Assignment working with teachers to create unit assessments to go with those standards in a whole different direction. We have been conducting a high number of risk assessments and directing families to the support services that are available to them in the community. And yesterday was a professional learning day, which you may have seen if you went to your polling place, that there were teachers in there learning elementary English, language, arts, as well as school climate, and our secondary folks working in content areas. A very full day, and... Oops. Sorry about that. And that's the end of the show. Thank you.
Before you leave, could I just ask you one question? Maybe it's a comment, I'm not sure, but I was reading just sort of something about Park City tragedy a few weeks ago, and...
Barkland?
Yeah, Barkland, I'm sorry. Wrong, wrong. And it said one of the things that they found out there is they had done drills there, but they had never done... Had multiple crises at one time, and that was one of the traumas that they had there. Not only did the individual breach with the weapons, but they also pulled the alarm, and so they hadn't trained for that. So... And the other thing is, I think they said that he found out what their methods were, their safety methods were, because they had published it or it was made aware. So I don't really want the answer to the question, but I just hope that when we do our exercises, that we have multiple scenarios going on at the same time so that, you know, we're aware of all these things. Multiple things could be happening at once.
You start with your traditional drills, and as JR is a retired police officer, he has a lot of expertise in the area of trying to simulate reality. There are two sides of that.
Yep.
Of instilling fear in children and adults, more so than you need to, but getting them prepared for any kind of emergency. And so our district crisis team has those kind of conversations about how far you go.
Yep. Okay. I understand.
Dr. Morel, may I ask, similarly to exactly what Chairman Wilson has brought up, I wrote some notes here. What I think would also be interesting is, on top of building-level security and safety plans, our students in our schools that have individualized safety and security plans and doing walkthroughs and practice on those unique individual safety and security plans may also be a good exercise on top of, you know, a whole school crisis, as they are unique to those individuals, and it's because of their unique needs, and, you know, they could either... It could... Practice makes perfect, I guess, is my point in those cases. So I think it'd be a good exercise while we're walking through some of these safety and security plans, actually follow a couple of these individuals and how, regardless of the building plan, how unique their individual plan, you know, may change things in an evacuation procedure or some other type of emergency.
And how to make a child comfortable while they wait in the area of refuge for somebody to come into that area.
That's right.
And so those are parts of some of the drills, not all of the drills, but I agree with you. When we had to evacuate Chippens Hill a couple of years ago, it was not smooth, right? We were getting some of our very disabled students out of the building. We learned from that and put some strategies in place for doing that a little more effectively, but we can always get better.
Dr. Morel, just to comment, I just wanted to let you know, several years ago during our bound scaners, there was one at Eastern, and Eastern was evacuated to Stafford. And I had gone because we had... My daughter was in high school, and they had said, "You can come pick up your kids." And the mother came up to me in tears. She couldn't find her daughter, and her daughter did have an individual plan. And I saw Mr. Higgins, and I went and I asked him. He goes, "I know exactly where she is," and he took care of it, and so it is happening. It may need to be improved, but it is something that has been looked into and is happening.
Yep. I'm waving my hands like I'm in school.
Okay, if no one else has any comment?
Commissioner...
Okay, I didn't see it, I'm sorry. I'm looking at my agenda.
So in keeping with the topic of emergencies and protocols, I didn't really know when to bring this up or how to bring this up, but I think it would be good for our community at large, parents in particular, to have an explanation of what a soft lockdown is versus a traditional lockdown, because there was quite a fair amount of concern. And had it been explained more thoroughly perhaps in the beginning of the year, that that is medically needed?
We've given it a new word, a new phrase, shelter in place.
Okay.
If a child or a staff member is having a medical emergency, we have everybody stay in their rooms to protect the privacy of the individual who's getting the medical attention. And that is a relatively new protocol for us.
Okay.
I hope that the school calls after the drill and explains that they had had the lockdown. Did you get a call? If not, I've got a...
We can talk later, but I just want to make sure that all parents are aware of the fact that if there is a soft lockdown, they don't need to worry necessarily that their own children are safe, because that's a very horrible feeling for parents to have.
I agree.
I've heard a lot about it, and my heart goes out to parents when they feel that way, so that needs to be addressed.
Without going further into it, all of our administrators are supposed to do a messenger call after they do a drill, so parents are aware that a drill has occurred. Now, this was called a soft lockdown. That's an old term. We're really giving very specific names to the types of drills that we have. There are five different kinds. We're not going to tell you what those are, but that's what helps with the precision of making everyone safe.
Right.
Is to have different drills for different kinds of emergencies.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. If no one else has any comment, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items that they wish to pull out of the consent agenda?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to pull out 8.1. B Administrator hires.
Okay. Anybody else have any others they want to pull out? If not, I think you're ready to vote, so we will vote for all the items except 8.1B.
Did we have a motion?
We'll move that. Well, yeah, we'll ask for a motion. I'm sorry. Well, I'm just trying to clarify what the motion was going to be.
So move.
So motions are made. Do we have a second? We have a second. Properly made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We will deal with that on New Business. We'll put that on the New Business. Okay, we'll move to Public Comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay, we do have some public comment, so we'd ask you to come to the speaker's table. Ask that you try to confine your comments to three minutes and address the chair with your comments. The first speaker is Jocelyn Benoit. I might have said that name wrong.
Nope, you said it perfectly.
Okay, all right.
Good evening. My name is Jocelyn Benoit, and I live at 38 Had Meadow Lane. I'm a parent of two children at Green Hills School. And good evening, committee. On August 13th, 2018, the Green Hills community was notified by the news media and by Dr. Morel that our principal, Scott Goddett, and two other staff members were being placed on leave pending a DCF investigation. It would be an understatement to say that our community was devastated to hear this news. When the school year began on August 30th, we hoped to see his car in his normal parking spot as we entered the lot, but that was not to be the case. Speculations, questions, and mistrust began to build. Who would be in charge of Green Hills School? At the close of the school year in June, one of our assistant principals, Marcy Jones, was filling out at another school in the district, so she was not present at the end of the school year. We were also notified days before the end of the school year that our other assistant principal, Kathy Hill, would not be returning in the fall. I know that over the summer months, the district hired Megan Reiner to replace Assistant Principal Kathy Hill. So going into the fall, our principal was out. We had a new assistant principal, and Mrs. Jones, who had been gone at the end of the school year, was the only administrator kids and parents knew. At our first PTA meeting on September 6th, there was no comment from the current administration regarding our principal or anything that was going on regarding that situation. At our second PTA meeting on October 3rd, there was also no comment made. I am a social worker by profession, and I know that DCF only has 45 days to complete an investigation. I asked the current administration if they had called DCF to question why the investigation was taking so long, and they said, "We know nothing." Saying "we know nothing" does not breed confidence with parents. I called the ombudsman's office the very next day at DCF, and they told me the investigation didn't start with them until July 9th, when they were handing the investigation from the police. On October 24th, after continued speculation unrest from parents, I emailed Dr. Morel expressing my concerns regarding the lack of communication from the Board of Ed and the current school administration regarding Mr. Goddett. We were not asking for any confidential personnel information, but something, anything, communication regarding the process, timeline, or even that the case was in DCF's hands and that there was nothing you could do until that investigation was completed. Parents received an email that night from Dr. Morel informing us, you know, that it was still in the hands of DCF, and they had received multiple extensions, but still no information to share. In my email exchange with Dr. Morel, she said that her leadership stops by Green Hills often. That would have been very helpful information to share with parents. This would have let parents know that the Board of Ed and the superintendent's office are present and that you do care about the well-being of our children, the teachers and the staff at Green Hills School who work tirelessly every day to keep things running as smoothly as possible. There are over 950 children at Green Hills School and 120 staff members. We went 73 days without any communication from the Board of Ed or the superintendent. That's completely unacceptable, especially considering all of the administration changes over the summer. We, as parents, were prepared to attend this meeting tonight to express our concerns in public, in this public forum. Thankfully, on November 2nd, we received the best email ever that our beloved principal, Mr. Goddett, would return to Green Hills School on November 5th. Although we are rejoicing in his return and hope that everything will return to normal as soon as possible, I am here to implore you, the superintendent and the Board of Ed, to be more transparent and have better communication with parents going forward in the future. Heaven forbid something like this should ever happen at another school in our district, and I pray it never does. Please communicate with parents. I encourage you to be more proactive and not reactive. Our children, their teachers, and their principal and our community deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to deliberated items and leadership team reports. First item on the agenda is our October enrollment count for the 2018-19 school year. I will ask Dr. Galloway.
Good evening, commissioners. I thought all day of a dramatic delivery for this enrollment report.
I'm sorry, do you?
So here it is. I'm going to start with the so what. This is what you would be very interested to know. We are up 22 students overall from last year this time. District wide, we're up 22 students. I'd want you to know that over the last four or five years, you have become a more diverse school district. The numbers do bear that out. Middle school student numbers are still a struggle, so you will hear, like we've heard in the past, that the K-5 numbers are not bad. The class average is about 21 students, but we do still experience a logjam in the middle school area. Anecdotal information from the registrar's office tells us that parents overall are coming to town because of the high value that they feel in their real estate and the value that Bristol offers in regard to education. So those are some of the so whats. So I'll quickly dive into school by school numbers, just so you know that we are paying attention to section numbers on a daily basis. So that being said, if I start with Edgewood School, Edgewood is steady. Edgewood is steady at this point. Green Hills School, we are watching grade two. Those numbers are up, and grade five. I was over there earlier today to look at the eighth grade numbers and the spacing at Green Hills. I'll be in constant communication with Mr. Goddard about that. Hubble School, as you can see, down 19, and at this point in time, Hubble is steady. Ivy Drive, down 17. We're watching grade two with 22, 23, and 23 in the sections. Mountain View has evened out and is steady. And South Side, grade five, is up there with 27, 26, and 26. So I'll say at this point, last year, we, we were looking at registration numbers month by month, and we looked over the course of nine months. And over the course of nine months, enrollment went up five months and down four months, but not by much. So the numbers do fluctuate, but not by a lot, but we do have a lot of inter-district movement, in-district movement. So moving along to Stafford School, Stafford is down 37. And we've had multiple conversations as to why do we think that is so, but if you look at how the housing is in town, we are believing that, you know, like in Stafford, you have the small, the one-family homes there, and in other parts of town, you have a lot of rental property. So, you know, this is an ongoing conversation as we're registering families, trying to figure things out. And moving down to West Bristol School, grade five is up there with 27, 26, 26, and 26, with the cap being 28. And if you go down to the bottom of the page, you'll see district-wide, the enrollment, the class average is about 21 students at the K-5 level. So, you know, that, that's great, but I just want to be, you know, transparent at the middle school. It's tight. It is tight. Going over to the middle school pages, where you, where you'll see Green Hills, their total enrollment being 782. Green, I'm sorry. That's Chippins Hills, 782, and Green Hills, 300 in the upper grades. Their total's about 925. Northeast at 501, West Bristol, 330 in the upper grades, and over 900 total student pop. Question? And you'll see at the bottom, the overall increase is about 22 students. And I will point out that the magnet school number will change because all of the invoices are not in yet. So that number's going to change. Moving on to the next page, I'd like to point out where it says, if, if you're not following along, I'll just read out, the comparison of Bristol numbers to previous year, to current year. Two things, two schools really jump out. Bristol Central, an increase of 69 students, while Bristol Eastern is down 23 students. So if you look at how the town is laid out, that starts to bear out some of our conversations when we're trying to really figure out why some schools are bulging and some schools are steady. So I'll move to the diversity part. And as I said earlier, you are a more diverse school district.
So before you go on, the changes in numbers, are those, that's just the elementary school flowing up, or are we seeing migration into the community? The numbers are going up.
There is migration in, in the community, but also folks are leaving as well. So we're wondering, like, we were having a conversation about Stafford School. Are kids just aging out over there? You know, when we look at Stafford School. So folks are moving in, but also folks are moving out.
But they seem to be moving in at the upper grades.
True.
They're moving out at the lower grades, which is a little unusual.
True. Central saw a huge influx of students in September, October, about 20, about 20 students. 20 additional students at the start of a school year, you feel, you feel it, you know, as an administrator, because you have to indoctrinate students who come from various places into the way we do things here.
Dr. Galloway, can I ask you a question before you move on as well? You know I'm constantly in your ear about this, but I do get many concerns, including myself as a parent. I know that the middle schools in the K-8s are a logjam. What are we doing about that? Do we have any ideas, or is there anything we can do when there are classes that have 36 students in them? My fear is that you can't concentrate properly here, properly learn properly. So what is it that we're doing or can do to facilitate some improvement in that?
So this is not a side step. I don't have a definitive answer for you, but I will say this, that issue arises out of, for the most part, the accelerated classes, where parents want, they want their child in there. And, you know, at the middle school level, the door is kind of open for, for kids to be in there, which makes it a little different. It changes in grades nine through 12. So that is an issue, and that's why I was, you know, I was in the school today. I was counting desks, looking at spacing. So it's a challenge, and I'm sorry, I don't have a concrete answer for you that doesn't say additional staffing. So I think that's something that we, we just have to work through, and it's, it's been persistent. I recall either last year or the year before going to Chippins Hill in their Spanish section, very crowded, but parents want the kids in there. It's called accelerated. Principals and administrators work with families to have their kids gain access, and then these kids start moving together as clusters, at least at the middle school level. More to follow? I know you'll be, I know.
May I add, Dr. Galloway, there, at the, at West Bristol and at Green Hills, we only have one team in each of the grades, and that presents the dilemma of some classes having low enrollment and some having very high. I did check on that because I had a parent contact me, and the teacher, science, has 36 students, but it was the teacher herself who had some students in other class periods who said, "I think these other two students belong in my class," so they moved in. But they're not in the English, Language Arts, the Social Studies, and the Math. There are 34 in those sections, which means another class is probably 16 or 18 because you've drawn off that many students. But behavior's good, kids are doing well. That's really what we want to hear. Well, one of the, one of the items that you mentioned was the type of housing in the different sections that serve some of the districts of these schools. If that's the case, those housing types probably aren't going to change, so we're going to persistently potentially have that issue in those, in those areas. So it's not going to go away either, if, if that's one of the reasons. So I don't know what can be done as far as, as far as that's concerned, but I guess it was just a comment I was making.
Right. And I don't want to get on a soapbox, so there are few choices. You could make a hard cut in regard to students gaining access to these courses, right? You either hit a cut score or you don't. That's usually not the philosophy, at least at that level you want. Students to have access. And I, I was in there, in the classrooms earlier today, and, you know, they have tables, they have chairs, so it's a different kind of setup. So it's not the traditional row, like 30 rows of, you know, kids there. They're working collaboratively, tables of four, long tables next to each other to do turn and talks. So I know it's a lot of kids, but the furniture and, and the furniture placement makes it more manageable. But I will continue to go in, in there. I'll continue to work with and speak with the administrators at that level to elicit their ideas as well. So I'm sorry, I don't have a concrete answer. It doesn't cost more money. You give us sometimes, continue to work through it. Any questions in regard to the diversity report? You are a more diverse district. I wanted to see if I had any other salient points for you. I would like to point out, just to give you a sense, between October and September, there are 162 new registrations. Bristol Central experienced 20 registrations, Eastern 20, West Bristol, K-5, 21, to my earlier point. Right now, this has come up in the past, where are people coming from, where families coming from. But when we pulled this report, New Britain was leading the way, followed by Waterbury and Meriden. We've registered students from, quite frankly, all over the country as far as Washington State. So not to belabor the point, that concludes my report pending your questions.
Have we endangered any school violating any racial or economic?
No, I think, I think the, the thing that we keep our eye on constantly is actually a special ed placement of students, but racially, we're okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we did pull something out from the consent agenda and we never came back to it.
We're going to do it under New Business.
All right, thanks.
Okay. I think I've been informed that that's the correct way to do it. The way I, I used to do it was wrong, so we're going to do it the correct way.
Duly noted.
Your items, 10.2, Ms. Forten was going to present that this evening, but she had a family emergency situation, so she will not be, and so we will, we will put that on the agenda for next month, so we won't hear about the smarter balance. I think you heard that before. So now we go to New Business, and so this is where we're going to put those two items on the agenda. So Commissioner Hens, would you like to do that?
I can let Dr. Moreau do it.
Oh, okay, 8.1. B?
Which one?
The Administrator hires?
Sure, let's do that one.
Okay. So let's see who we have out there in the audience. And I see her. Mrs. Maryliz Fitzpatrick, stand up. Our new Chippins Hill Middle School principal. Well deserved. We have two others, and I don't see Erica Coleman. So Erica was our teaching and learning elementary supervisor, and she's now assistant principal and K-8 literacy supervisor at West Bristol School. And Jamie Reckenberg is coming to us from crack. Sorry.
Yeah, I heard.
As a secondary supervisor of math, science, and technical education. She is a find. She's been training people, done workshops in 83 districts across the state. We are really fortunate to have her expertise joining us, and she'll be joining us very shortly
I think we technically need to put that, to put that on, first we have to put it on the agenda or move it, right?
Yep.
So.
So I moved to put that, put an item on the agenda under New Business.
Okay. So, second, the motion before you is to add this item to New Business. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So now, I would entertain a motion that we approve item 8.1. B.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Some duly made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, I think we have a second item to put on the agenda, and I will turn that again over to Commissioner Hens since it's your portfolio.
I moved to add an item to the new business, to the agenda under New Business.
Okay. Want to just tell us what it is in general, so that people know why you're putting some on the agenda?
I already told everybody. I paid attention during my report. We have an item concerning the parking lot.
Okay. All right. Okay, so that's enough. So that's, motions are made. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second. So it's properly made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now, we will make the motion.
I will move that we accept the changes, the alteration to the parking lot, which Dr. Moreau is going to describe.
Okay. So the Board of Education is approving a change to the parking lot cuts, and these are not actually our parking lot, but they are attached to our parking lot. There are two cuts coming from School Street into the church and, the churches and where the Bristol Press Building is, and they want to close those two and create one that's directly opposite the entrance to our parking lot. It's a very long motion, but that's what the request is.
Okay.
This is a request for a speed bump.
Yeah.
Okay.
A recommendation.
We're going to, and there's a recommendation that a speed bump be added so that people don't come straight through our parking lot at 40 miles an hour.
I'll respect that.
Okay. Well, is that going to be part of the motion, or is that?
It'll be part of the, the letter that I send to town clerk.
Okay. So motions are made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Everybody understands what they're doing? So we have a small business who shares part of that parking lot, the church shares part of that parking lot. There's two curb cuts. We're going to eliminate it, and they're going to put one curb cut in. So they've kind of just asked us as courtesy to approve it, so that's where we're at.
It's been approved by all the city departments.
Yes, it has been approved by all the city departments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I believe that is all the comments we had under New Business. We can move right into information. Does anybody have information that's of the greater good of the Board of Education? If not, we'll go right into liaison reports. I'll start with my left. Commissioner Hens, Commissioner Jim.
I do have a couple of items. On October 30th, I attended the Greater Bristol Special Education PTO Board Meeting, and I wanted to bring to this board some information about their upcoming November meeting and the training that they'll be offering in their December and January meeting. On November 13th, they will be welcoming Love of Learning Incorporated, which is an organization to share, that will be sharing their mission statement for education and services that they are going to be offering to the community, to families whose children could benefit from different styles of learning. So they will be presenting to our board. We will also have Mike Mashad from the Miracle League of Connecticut. We will also have Mike Mashad from the Miracle League of Connecticut will stop by and discuss some new programming that they're going to have over the winter months, one called the SIBSHAPS program for siblings of children with a disability. And they're also going to talk about their Super Saturdays University, which is a combination of adaptive sports program that's offered on Saturdays in different age groups, and that will run from November to March, I'm sorry, the SIBSHAPS will run from November to March for siblings age eight to thirteen years old on the second Sundays of the month. The Super Saturdays will also begin regularly on Saturdays in two different age groups, and these programs will be located at where their headquarters is, and that's at Chapter one-two-six here in Bristol. At that meeting, and the November thirteenth meeting, we will also be welcoming Dr. Michael Dieter to come speak to us, Director of Special Services, and he'll discuss new topics in town and future plans for special education, including the social-emotional learning implementation That is the November agenda. And then the Bristol, Greater Bristol SEPTA will be the host for CPAC to come in and do two official training offerings to our community. CPAC is the Connecticut Parent Advocacy Center. They are run by federal grant program here in the state, in the southern part of the state. They offer each of the communities up to two formal training sessions from their department, and they travel to the community to do such. On Tuesday, December eleventh, they are going to host the Nuts and Bolts of Special Education. Parents of children with disabilities will learn how to become more active participants in their children's education. This session will include information on evaluations, record-keeping, planning and placement team, or PPT meetings as they're known as, individualized education programs, IUP, Section 504, and dispute resolution. The training will be held at Chapter one-two-six, and there will be pizza, refreshments, and childcare provided for those that register. The January training session will occur on January eighth, the same place, six-thirty to eight, and that training session will be called, How Do I Know If My Child Is Making Progress? This workshop will introduce participants to the importance of reviewing data provided by the school to determine whether or not a child is making progress. Participants will learn how to use the IUP and other tools to determine what data should be collected and how to utilize it to ensure that a child is making continuous progress. Pizza refreshments and childcare will also be provided. We, let me just say, all are welcome. You do not need to be solely a Bristol resident to attend, so that's why it's a Greater Bristol. We do take attendees from neighboring districts as well. And that concludes my liaison report for Greater Bristol SEPTA.
Thank you. Commissioner Dubey?
Yes, I just have one thing to share. The eighth-grade students at West Bristol are conducting a year-long service project. It started in September, it's going to go through June. They're collecting redeemable plastic bottles and non-alcoholic cans, and this will benefit the Wounded Warrior Project, which is an amazing organization. The goal is to raise five hundred dollars or collect ten thousand plastic bottles or cans. Just a little background information, the Wounded Warrior Project was established to help veterans and service members who incurred a physical or mental injury, illness, or wound while serving in the military on or after September eleventh, two thousand and one. As of November first, the eighth grade has collected three thousand five hundred bottles and cans. If you have any cans that did not have alcohol, bring them to West Bristol, please.
What's the deadline again?
It's going through June, so I understand towards the end of the school year.
So do you have a large vehicle, and if we bring them to the next Board of Ed meeting, we can?
Wow, maybe.
Yes, Commissioner Wilson. On October twenty-seventh, myself, Chairman Wilson, and Commissioner Taylor, there may have been others, attended the annual NAACP dinner and award ceremony. And I would just like to mention the names of some of our Bristol students who were awarded, who are honored based on their academic achievement, their community involvement, their extracurricular activities. The paragraphs on each of them are lengthy and loaded, I don't know how these kids do it, but I'm just going to give you their names. They are Kaia Alexander, Brianna Golding, Joseph Harden, Lauren Jackson, Jason Lipscomb, who I believe is the son of one of our teachers, Amy, Amaya Mazari, Eliza Odom, Danielle Palmer, and Sienna Sampson, all amazing, amazing kids.
Thank you. Commissioner Cagiano?
Just nothing.
Commissioner Grabowski? Commissioner O'Brien?
You'll pass.
Before we conclude, I did want to give you an update on the Memorial Boulevard intra-district Magnet School, and I, I do want to clarify, apparently, when I spoke about Magnet Schools last month, people thought we were talking about the intra-district Magnet School, and the key word is intra-district. It's, it's just a, a school within our school district. It doesn't have anything to do with the funding that I referred to either earlier about the crack schools, so that has nothing to do with our Magnet School. So I want to clarify that. The committee met last week, I think it was, or maybe two weeks ago now, and we discussed the qualifications for a constructor and construction manager, and so we've, a proposal for qualifications was submitted by the procurement office, and they received ten proposals, so the committee members are all perusing those ten proposals, of which Cheryl is in our audience, and she can add to any comments if I, when I finish my report that I forget. But, so we're perusing those, and then there'll be a meeting on the fifteenth, I believe it is, to decide who the four highly qualified, who will go to an interview process. So, and then we did have a, a report from our architect and project manager. The architect gave us a very, very preliminary draft of the plan of the project, and it should take about thirty-six months. Eighteen months will be involved in doing building and site evaluation, educational programming, conceptual design, schematic design, and budget, design development, construction documents, and then finally bidding. And then the construction itself should take about eighteen months, and the building will be commissioned, and all the technology and the furniture and the staff trained on using the building, and that should take the other part of the eighteen months. And so the, at this point, and it's a very broad schedule, it's very preliminary, it's very conceptual at this point, but they're anticipating that we could put that school online in August of twenty-twenty-two. Now, they've, they've left some very wide ranges in some of these, and until they get the construction manager on board, this is just the architects at this point, once they get the construction manager on board, they could tighten down, tighten down some of these timelines, but that's what we're looking at. One of the questions that was posed by Commissioner Cagiano is, is this building going to be LEED certified? LEED is Leadership in Energy and Environmental.
Design.
Design. Thank you. I had it written down, but it wasn't coming quickly, you could tell. So what we did with the two K-eights and what we'll do with this school is, we will meet the qualifications of LEED, or the, most of the qualifications for LEED, but we won't be officially a Silver LEED certified school. And the reason really is just cost and, long-term cost and short-term cost on that. So to get the plaque and get the certification, a third party has to come in and evaluate your school, and there are some external costs that we did not incur when we built the two K-eights. This is with the approval and agreement of the Department of Administrative Services and the Office of School Construction. That's typically how we do it, is we try to embed as many of the LEED design that we can without spending all the money on the school. It would be, I've been told approximately fifty thousand plus to became a certified LEED, or, and premium is even more, so that, I hope that answers your question on that. I don't know, Cheryl, you had anything else you wanted to add to the report? I, I think we're also in the process of finalizing, the, the architect has been working without a contract to this point, so we're in the process of finalizing that contract, and they're also finalizing the contract for the environmental hygienist who has been hired, but they don't actually finalize that contract. So those two contracts will be finalized, I think, in the next thirty to, thirty days or so, as I understand it. But the, the big challenge for the committee now is going to be to identify those four constructor and construction managers, and then to have interviews for them, and then, you know, the committee will have to pick one. And then I think we've also been approached by a couple of groups who want to make presentations on Project Labor Agreement and ABC Building is, wants to give their side of that same issue, so they will, they both have, in the future will have some fifteen minutes to make their presentations. Dr. Dieter is our chair of our committee, and I don't know if I have missed any highlights that you want to highlight. Dr. Dieter, I would be glad to let you fill in anything that I missed.
Well.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
What are the meetings that you're talking about, are they noticed, or could they be perhaps noticed through the board here as well, too? A lot of interesting information, and thank you for answering my question, but I don't know that I've seen.
They are public meetings, so I'm sure they're posted, but.
City side, though, that they're posted, then?
It's a city committee technically, so it's not a Board of Education committee, but we will make sure that it gets posted on our side as well.
Things helpful for the operations committee to know about it, so thanks.
We'll certainly make sure that all the board members, you know, and.
Basically every other Thursday, but in November, there's only one meeting. I can send you that, the updated calendar.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Chairman.
You said six-thirty? Correct.
That's one in December.
Okay, so I don't, I don't have anything else of any other information, so at this point, we're going to vote to convene into executive session for the person, for the purpose of discussing attorney-client communication regarding the legal steps for addressing a DCF personnel investigation. And who will be going in will be, obviously, our attorney, Jessica Riddicker, and the superintendent, Dr. Moreau, and the board.
So moved.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.